Good evening. It's Thursday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four at seven oh four P M. And this is the Board of Finance regular meeting for the town of Wellington, Mississauga border. We'll start with the seating of alternates. Stephanie is not in this evening, so do we have a motion for as a alternate?
I'll make a motion to see.
Second, I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Do you have any comments or edits that need to be made? Are you all set?
Yeah, I think I have a motion to accept the minutes.
Wait a second. Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Unanimous.
I'm not. Same.
Oh, you're saying.
So, yeah.
Okay. One extension. Next, we will move on to present to speak. Public participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time in appropriateness of comments to maintain progress, stay on topic, and maintain the quorum. Do we have anybody for present to speak? No, so we will move on to old business, which there is none of. So as far as new business, we will start with item number one, the September two thousand twenty-four financial report being presented by title of things.
So far, so good. We're three months into the fiscal year. The revenues, the money from the state, which is in the intergovernmental category, is coming in on schedule. The licenses, fees and permits, and the investment income are tracking ahead of budget. The licenses and fees and permits, we already talked about, that was due to a permit for a solar charging station that came in in July. And the investment income is also tracking ahead of budget, so that's good. Expenditures, nothing to alert you to. The debt service principal and interest payments will be coming due in December. So then, um, at the end of December, you'll see the expenditures reflected there for those items. Can we have any questions?
Do you have any questions or comments? Are we all set? Then we will move on. Item number two, waste energy report being presented by China.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to the meeting this evening. With fire stations being proposed to be built and with both of our schools in need of repairs, I attended the Board of Education meeting where they discussed the repairs to the school buildings last week, and part of the plan was to purchase gas-fired boilers for the two schools in order to modernize their heating equipment. If we were to purchase those now, we're spending, I think they have allocated close to fifteen million dollars for the heating systems in the two schools. That seems like an awful lot of money to spend on fossil fuel infrastructure. I can make an economic case that either ground-sourced or air-sourced heat pumps make a much more valid case for going forward with heating and cooling in these buildings by combining a heat pump arrangement with solar power. The savings are dramatic. If you take a look at my letter, if we look at the first page where it talks about an oil furnace cost per million BTUs, in order just to have a common way to look at these, if we want to look at it from a standpoint of cost per million BTUs. So, one million BTUs to be divided by a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred, which is the number of BTUs in a gallon of heating oil, comes out to seven point two-two gallons of oil. Oil is currently around three, three forty a gallon. At the time that I wrote this, it was closer to four dollars, but that was during heating season. Right now, we're approaching into heating season again, and I expect to see the price of oil go back up to somewhere around four dollars a gallon. Geopolitical shocks happen frequently with the fossil fuel market. We saw it as recently as February of two thousand twenty-two, oil prices north of five dollars. The average, I think the highest average I saw was five dollars and twenty-two cents. So if we look at the three dollars and ninety-eight cents per gallon, it comes up to twenty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents for a million BTUs of heat. But oil burners and gas burners also are not one hundred percent efficient. In the case of oil burners, they're only eighty-four percent efficient at best. So we would have to take that twenty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents divided by point eight four, and it comes out to a real cost per million BTUs of thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. On the next page, I break down how air-sourced heat pumps would perform. Air-sourced heat pumps don't have a efficiency rating like we saw with the oil, had an eighty-four percent efficiency. Heat pumps do things differently. They use what's called a coefficient of performance. And that is for every unit of energy that you put in, you get a certain number of units of energy back out. In the case of air-sourced heat pumps, for every kilowatt hour of power you put in, you get three kilowatt hours of heat energy back from the system. So if we look at a million BTUs, the heat output of one kilowatt of electricity is approximately three thousand four hundred B G. So one million divided by three thousand four hundred and twelve comes out to two hundred and ninety-three kilowatt hours. The rate that I quoted there for electricity was twenty-seven point seven four cents per kilowatt hour. That was again last spring, so it could well be north of that now, especially with the public benefits charge. I'm getting an echo. The public benefits charge caused a massive increase in people's bills, so we're probably looking at closer to thirty-eight cents per kilowatt hour by this time. But if we just take the old numbers of twenty-seven point seven four cents per kilowatt hour, two hundred and ninety-three kilowatt hours times that number is eighty-one dollars and thirty-one cents for a million BTUs. However, you still need to divide that by the coefficient of performance. If we're using air-sourced heat pumps, we divide the eighty-one thirty-one by three, because that's the coefficient of performance for air-sourced. It comes out to twenty-seven dollars and ten cents per million BTUs, seven dollars cheaper than oil per million BTUs. So if we also, one thing I did not include in here was if we go with a ground-sourced heat pump, it's even better. Ground-sourced heat pumps get a coefficient coefficient of performance between five and six. I currently use a ground-sourced heat pump for heating and cooling my house. It's fantastic. I put solar panels on the roof. I don't pay for heat anymore.
Want to sleep yet?
Basically get free heat all summer long, or I'm sorry, all winter long. In the summertime, I run my air conditioner. It runs both ways. We can turn it to heating in the wintertime and air conditioning in the summer. In the summer, I cool the house, and the excess heat that's rejected out of the upstairs of my house gets applied to my hot water tank before it gets applied into the ground loop. I get free hot water all summer because I run my air conditioner. This is the type of thing that we could have in all of our buildings. If we're going to be building fire stations, we're going to be building schools. We need to get away from using fossil fuels, and especially if we make purchases now of fossil fuel infrastructure, they're going to last twenty-five, thirty, forty years. The state has mandated a goal of being carbon neutral by, I think, twenty forty. It's one of the more aggressive goals that's out there, and in order for us to be able to meet those goals, we have to start planning for it now. What I would really appreciate the Board of Finance doing would be to consider a moratorium on the purchase of fossil fuel infrastructure for heating and to use heat pumps wherever possible and applicable. The cost to own a heat pump is vastly lower than the cost to own anything that burns fossil fuels. Fossil fuel prices do nothing but go up. Over the next twenty-five, thirty, forty years, we can expect them to go higher and higher still. The greatest thing about doing this with solar is that it brings the cost down to where it's almost negligible. So the the costs may be higher initially in order to purchase the equipment. However, there are grants available from the federal government. There's the Renewable Energy for America program by which we could get up to fifty percent of the cost reimbursed through a grant from the federal government. Also, the Inflation Reduction Act made the thirty percent tax credit for renewable energy infrastructure refundable to even to situations where you don't have a tax bill like a municipality. So we could actually purchase the system for thirty-five percent of its real cost, assuming that we got a fifty percent grant through the REAP program and then the thirty percent grant, thirty percent tax credit, that is, on the remainder. It just, it makes perfect sense to do things this way, and heat and cool our buildings much more efficiently.
What's the cost, what's the lifespan of heat pumps versus boilers? Boilers last forty, fifty years at least.
Yes, I, I, ground-sourced heat pump has a fifty-year warranty. I'm not sure about air-sourced heat pumps, but I believe that they have over twenty or twenty-five year warranty.
And Lincoln and Warren.
Why have us put a moratorium on fossil fuel-generated power and heat and not let the engineers that are designing the buildings decide what would be best suited for the buildings that are being built?
From a standpoint of taxpayers, if we're going to be putting the bill for the fossil fuels going forward, I really think that the taxpayers would much more appreciate having those engineers use air-sourced or ground-sourced heat pumps where possible.
Could it be other situations where it just isn't possible because there isn't the right layout or the right footprint?
It could be that there's difficulty drilling. Sometimes you need to drill. We had to drill a well in our front yard in order to tack into the earth for our heating and cooling. There's opposition. I know that there's a big ground-sourced heat pump going in somewhere out west, and the neighbors are concerned because there's going to be about seven months' worth of drilling. They have to drill three hundred wells. And so, you know, the drilling is going to go on daily for quite a while. And so the residents are concerned about noise, et cetera. And, you know, there are cases where, you know, it gets to be a hassle for people because there's too much noise going on, et cetera. But really, that's about the only drawback. And once you own the system, you have no fuel costs. By going solar and using heat pumps, you have no fuel cost going forward. It's the greatest thing, I got to tell you. My own personal experience at my house, I spent one thousand four hundred dollars on energy for the entire year. That's heating, cooling, hot water, lights. I travel, I drive an electric car. One thousand four hundred dollars per year, little over a hundred dollars a month on average. I only paid those bills January, February, March timeframe when the sun is lower than the sky and I'm not getting the solar production that I do the rest of the year. It's really a tremendous deal, and I think it'd be a tremendous deal for me. I think it's something that we really need to take a good, hard look at and discuss with the engineers. I did ask the engineers at the school board meeting if they had considered geothermal, and they had not. So this is something that we should be asking them to consider.
Why would we mandate it if it makes so much sense economically that it sells itself like you're describing?
Just because I don't think anyone would be discussing this if we didn't come to talk about it. It's hard to believe if it's this, this great.
There are things to take into account, too, as far as if you put solar panels up on the roofs, especially of a school. The biggest failure in roofs is usually commercial roofs because they're flat, water pools up on them. So if you have solar panels up on a roof, your roof fails. Now the town's got to pay for the solar panels to be removed from the roof so that the roof can be serviced, and then they have to be put back on again.
At the same time as we're working on our schools, we're talking about putting new roofs on. Once the roof is on, then that problem will be solved.
Even with new roofs, a flat roof, like I said, there are a lot of times where it pulls up. You can have debris that's on the roof that, you know, because people are walking on the roof, end up with holes in the roof, and it ends up penetrating the roof system.
If the roof is inaccessible or undesirable for solar, you can put a solar canopy over the parking lots and keep snow and ice off the cars while they're parked under them. There are options. And certainly I'd want to explore all options before just saying, yeah, let's go with fossil fuels.
I just want to make a comment. So I know a lot of us are looking into solar just because of our electric bills and all that. You know, I think it's something great to explore. But one of the things that we would really need to be careful of is sometimes it voids a warranty on a roof. So that's something that we really need to consider as well. You know, if we're going to, you know, say we're going to have to do this, and then we find out later that it could cause some problems down the road, especially if we're going to put any roof on a school. I just, I just wanted to mention that just because I've been doing a lot of research on this just for my own personal, but also for other, other avenues. And the parking lot thing is pretty neat. I've done some work on that. But some of the, some of the consideration is, you know, we've had some really mild winters. What happens when you don't have a lot of winter and you don't have a lot of sun? And, you know, is there a negative downside to that?
Well, if there was a situation, let's say, where the solar panels weren't producing enough power to continue to heat the building, we would have to rely on the grid to provide the excess power. The analysis that I did here shows that even at grid rates, the use of a heat pump is more economical than the use of fossil fuels.
Where did you get your data from?
The average price of oil is published by the state of Connecticut. I pulled up their list. The price of electricity, I pulled it off my bill. And actually, the town might have a different regulatory opinion as well, because there's different rate classes, et cetera. I haven't looked into town bills to see what the actual rates are in the town.
Do you have anybody that's on your committee that's got their area of expertise in this?
Just me. I work in solar power. So on my committee right now, we have myself, Don Berg is getting reappointed. His term apparently expired. We weren't aware of that. And Bill Benel is also on the committee. We have four openings. If anybody would be looking to volunteer for another committee, we do have four openings, and we'd love to have more people, the more the merrier.
What's your role in this?
I work for a company in Massachusetts. They're based in Massachusetts. They only do work in Massachusetts. They can't work in Connecticut. We're not licensed here. But I work remotely, and I'm basically the operations manager for a fifteen million dollar a year solar power. We do mainly residential, but we've done several commercial jobs, large commercial. Another thing, too, about these two, if we were to put in a large commercial solar power installation, it would also come with an operations and maintenance plant by which the installers would come and check to make sure that the roof isn't paling underneath it and the system is working adequately, et cetera. There'd be a yearly valve check, more or less, on the system, typically with an operations and maintenance agreement.
Well, one of the things that you're saying is ignoring solar even for a second, just by using a heat pump, there would be a cost savings at all. So we could just be purely electric off the grid, still going to save.
Still going to save.
So are we able to ask the Board of Selectmen, you know, when projects are coming up, if they talk to the engineer and, you know, see what the viability is of this instead of following through and out right moratorium?
Yeah.
Any other questions for John? We'll move on then to item number three, which is the Wellington Conservation Committee. Thank you very much. Yes, I am.
I'm the chairperson of the Wellington Conservation Commission, and Bob Shannon is here with me. He's also a member of Conservation as well as Planning and Zoning. We wanted to talk to you tonight about the commission's recommendation that we add on some additional positive to the Fenton River Park. I had sent a letter to you. And you can see from what we've got, that the parcel that we're interested in is very, it's a small piece. It's seven point two acres, and it's along the Ashford border. There's no part of the property that's actually in Ashford, it's all in Wellington. And it's bounded by two unmaintained roads that actually go through the park. Those have not been maintained for a very long time. They're not in great condition. And we're concerned for a couple of reasons. We think this is a great addition to the park. One is that it's going to add on wildlife habitat. It's also going to be a place where people can walk. There's two small ponds on the property. But it would also make it less likely that in the future, somebody could purchase this parcel and try to develop it, which might force the town's hand to actually improve the road or allow a right-of-way through the park to get to that area. So those are some reasons that our commission's recommending that the town move forward to acquire this piece. We've been working with the landowner, Laura Peddix, who lives in Maryland for about two years now. And we, as last year, we came to you, and we asked for some open space money so we could do an appraisal, which was done last August. And the market value appraisal came in at thirty-five thousand dollars. So we've been talking with the landowner about some potential issues with the property that is a need to address to make sure that it was available to the public for open space. One of the issues is that there is a small building on the property. It was used as a little camp. It's about two hundred square feet, and that would need to be removed. It's in poor shape. It would be a hazard to leave it on the, you know, somebody went into it, it could collapse. So we've come up with some plans with Tori Spazato, who is online tonight. If you have any questions for Troy about how we could remove that. It also contains a shallow well, which would either need to be secured or filled so that no one would fall into this well. It's a sister well that has a top on it. And also, the two small ponds have dams. These ponds were man-made, and they have two small dams on them. So we did have that assessed by Carl Ansemovic, who's a professional engineer, has worked for many years for the town. He's also worked with me for many years to assess many dams in the state. And if you have any questions about the condition of the dams or what we would need to do, Carl's generous enough to come tonight to answer those questions. He did a full assessment last year and a report that we received. And there are several options for making sure that there's no hazards with the dam. The dams, if they did breach, would basically run onto these unmaintained roads and into the Fenton River Park property, would not be hazarding any of this property. But if you have any questions, Carl, I'm sure we'll answer those. And what he's really recommending at this point to minimize the risk that the dams can breach is just to basically cut some trees that are growing along these dams because they haven't been maintained for years. Property owners haven't really been in there to do any work for many years. And again, we worked with Troy to come up with a plan that public works would get in there, remove the house, fill the well, and also take out trees on the dam. And we've come up with some estimates and costs for all of these so that we could present to you what we anticipate the total cost for this project will be. We've come up with a cost of approximately seven thousand five hundred dollars. That's worst-case scenario, could be much less in terms of remediating the property to make sure that it would be available for open space. We've discussed this cost of the town wanting to curate the landowner. And so because she would like to see this added on to the Fenton River Park, she's willing to accept less than their market value for it. And so the cost of the well would be twenty-seven five. And then we've estimated, based on open space purchases that the town has done within the last few years, that the legal costs, you know, again, on the high end, would be seven thousand dollars. At our September eighteenth meeting, Conservation Commission voted unanimously. We recommend that the town acquire this. We went to Planning and Zoning on Tuesday, and there's a state statute that requires that the Planning and Zoning Commission also review any land purchases by the municipality, and they voted as well to recommend this acquisition to add to the park and said it was in keeping with the town's plan of conservation. In the past, the Conservation Commission has worked on three different open space purchases since two thousand and five. We've gone for grants in the past, and we, for the town, we've been able to get grants in excess of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in total for three properties that the town has purchased. But we're not suggesting or recommending that the town go forward to do a grant for this because deep is very specific about what it requires for surveys, appraisals, and the cost for those would be in excess of what we could get as a match for the land cost, because that's all the deep will match. They don't match the additional cost for legal remediation. So we felt that it would cost the town more to go through the ramp than we probably get. So what we'd like to ask the Board of Finance to consider is moving this forward to the Board of Selectmen so that they can call a town meeting so that the residents could vote on whether or not to appropriate funds for this. And we do have money in open space, and Donna's here if you have questions. She's forwarded us the status of the open space fund. And it appears it's about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in the open space fund currently that could be used for this purchase. Have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, before questions, can we just hear from Carl about the feasibility of the dam?
Oh, you mean about the dams?
Yeah.
Okay, so the dams would be considered very low hazard at this point because everything is rated by the D E P according to downstream impact if the dam should fail. In this particular case, we're looking at a portion of Amadon Road that's very wooded and currently not open for, you know, traffic to anything but a heavy four-wheel drive. So the only thing is that dams in general, you shouldn't have trees on them, create your anathema to a dam. And the reason for that is because if they fall over, if they're on a saturated embankment especially, it'll take a chunk of the embankment with it and then obviously lead to erosion and collapsing failure of the embankment. And that's what we will try to avoid here. There is some seepage at the base, which, you know, should be monitored over the years, but the beginning point is always to cut the trees and brush from the embankments of the dam. There are two of them there. One is a very low one of about three feet average in height. The other one has a maximum height of about twelve feet, the lower one. And that's the one that has, you know, some large trees and a dark vicinity of that. The upper pond, the northerly or easterly most pond has a channel that bypasses the lower pond, so there's an additional way for water to pass, but it passes directly at the base of the other dam. So again, beginning with removing trees and brush and then monitoring over the years to see if everything is clear. And there's a pipe running through the low dam as well that needs to be kept clear at all times.
Are these ponds?
I don't need to, I'm leaving, and I'm going to set the alarm upstairs, so are you all set going out down here?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I remember right, these ponds are only about four feet deep, right?
The what?
Ponds are only about four feet deep, correct?
Yeah, the upper pond is only about two to three feet deeper. And you can see there by the erosion emerging, you know, within the pond, it's a ucculifying bed. And the lower pond is a little bit deeper down toward. And the lower pond is a little bit deeper down toward the end, but because the pipe is set so high, there's a lot of sedimentation from organic matter that, that fills in the lower portion of the, of both ponds, basically. So they're, they're not very deep, no.
Probably worth noting, nothing, there's not like a body of water coming in to this pond.
No, it's a very small wash and you're correct.
Yes, it's brown there. So it's not like there's going to be a
It's a combination of both. There's a little bit of surface water coming in, but most of it is, is brown water as well.
And there's a camp that needs to be torn down or collapsed or we discussed different scenarios on, on Tuesday. With that, something potentially save a little bit of money if, if it's feasible. So the, the total asking is about forty, forty two?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, that's worst case, correct?
Right.
I, I just wanted to add one more thing. I mentioned at the Tuesday meeting, if you recall, is that back in the late nineties or early two thousands, we surveyed the, the road, the portion that was in Wellington. And the reason for that is because there was a proposal at that time to build a house on that particular site. And so the town would have been responsible to improve it from up at the intersection all the way down to where this house is located, which if it were to return, you know, to a development of a parcel, you know, you, you'd be in you, you'd have to pay for improving the look.
It would probably cost at least as much, not more.
Hoppa Farms is a good example of building all the way to the end. That was just to get it in as good gravel road was over a hundred thousand dollars. So.
You have a question? Any comments from anybody?
I, I just want to say that I think the Conservation Commission should get an A for their preparation and their planning and their presentation and I, I, this is just how all these requests should be, I think, where they planned for it for years. They asked for money for, through C I P. They actually have the money. It's sitting in an account. They have done some great due diligence here with negotiating and I just want to thank you.
I agree. Very thorough and we heard it on Tuesday, you know, even more so, so. Yeah, the one thing I wish is, you know, the halls, Larry Becker, the Hefsky stays to give a lot of money to the town for things like this. It'd be nice if we had people in town who have deep pockets and they would step forward like all those people did in the past.
Yeah, there's, there's some trust funds left and those people paid that one a tax.
So any other questions? All right, so we're being asked that the Board of Selectmen call a town meeting to appropriate forty two thousand dollars from the Open Space Fund to use for the purchase of the Pettix property located on Burma Road and associated costs, including legal services and property remediation, so that the property can be added to the Fenton Ruby Park and used for public recreation and wildlife habitat. We have a motion for that?
I would suggestion that you could say to appropriate up to forty two thousand in case it's less than you can give the rest back to the Open Space Fund.
So up to forty two thousand dollars for this project. All right, do we have a motion for that? So moved.
I'll second.
Hello, those in favor? Close? Extensions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we will be discussing typically your two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five budget calendar and letters, which was made out by Jeff Crutax and that also Donna. So go on, Jeff.
So all I did was, you know, we were talking about what to do, trying to be more prepared than previous years versus starting earlier. We typically start the meetings that were, like I gave you last year. This is not, this is the same. Nothing is going to change with it. We always have one extra meeting date or just, you know, if you need a note or whatever. They kind of already have two.
Yeah, I remember having two.
So how do you get back to, to adjust to that? And there's been all the thought I've kind of split up or reorganize the who comes when, the schedule. I don't really want to help that makes any sense. If, if it does. The two biggest ones are going to always going to be Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen. All of those boards need a lot of time to get their budgets together. I, I can't see putting them in front. Kind of looking at it, you know, there's a lot of these that are non-controversial, I guess is a term you could use. Special revenues are barely straightforward except at the library. Lived officials, most of those besides planning and zoning are very basic. So, you know, we could combine all of those into one night and possibly free up one extra meeting day for a real, you know, discussion. Always make people come back. You know, there's always questions that have to go unanswered, so. That's one part of it. And the other part that wasn't long sent out scheduled is the letter. And Donna was nice enough to take us the nicest rhetorical documents. So I'll all the way back to my orientation. So just kind of, you know, other boards kind of asked, but the past, it's generally the same. I kind of stopped at the twenty fifteen letter. We, you know, we can tweak things, but I, I kind of liked how that was ordered. Typically, that should go out in December along with the scheduling. The calendar. I, you know, anybody else have any other? Besides the boilerplate, keep them low. I personally like the two thousand fifteen six month. Still point. Plans is going on.
But is all of that's like true this year? Are revenue projections going to be flat?
You've got to get the financial reports.
Right.
I mean, I think given the, the fact that we had the failed budget last time, that a recommendation to all the departments to keep things as low as inhumanly possible may cut us.
Guess the only other thing that nobody ever really says, so relevant is about what format everyone should be in, right?
So usually we make it easy for all the budget writers. We give them a form so that it's all the same for you and Yeah, yeah. So you have consistency in what you're looking at.
Now, last year we had a hard time getting people to submit their requests a week before the meeting. Some of them wouldn't submit them until one or two days before.
But that happens every year.
I think something we need to plan on too, maybe this last, I know I'm relatively new, but this last time we went through and came into it without really a goal in mind. It's, we know it's going to have to go up. But by how, you know what I mean? We spent a good portion of at least one meeting discussing what is an acceptable increase. I think we need to have that way that we're going into it as well, as, as best we can. I, I know things change by the time, but that's something we have to, nothing's going to get magically better.
Well, no, I, I know, but I'd like some giant project could come up somewhere, you know what I mean? Something like that. I, I realize that, but we needed, I think we need to have a, at least an idea going into it instead of using all of these days discussing just that. I, I think even think as tight as possible is good. You're going to wind up in situations like with the school, with the, with the outplacement incident, or you know, something like that's going to happen again. Yeah, that's going to just, you know, it's like throwing Bob and everything. That was the, yeah. I like this format better though, you know, that's really going to read the same.
Visually.
Years, very dark, things like that. But you know, that format is very, very more appealing.
More appealing, yeah.
This one here, twenty fifteen. Yeah, they both have good information. And I like the one with the official header and everything. Looks more. Yes.
Yes, this, this looks like it got, got me to send out of the email. Yeah. It's just fine, but.
Yeah, I think having a letter like that's a good thing.
Yeah, I agree.
So you want an actual letter?
Make it a pity.
Will you tell us the
I guess as a, well, we're like, we're taking a letter. What the, yeah.
And then we can just massage basically the, the parts that are variable from year to year, whether or not the revenue is coming in are flat or down or up or whatever.
Sure, now that kind of educated some of those doing.
Yeah.
So any, any other comments regarding that and any other letters? It's, it's really should be beginning of December and a couple of, like, one of these is into January, only gives you a month. It goes that way. Well, at the end of December. You said that wasn't the expenditures or whatever was, there was something that wasn't the debt, the principal payments and the interest, that's not coming in until December. We won't know about that. So I think if we have all that information, like as soon as we have it, we should be able to put the letter out.
But I agree earlier, it's definitely better.
Any comments?
I'm confused that how are the revenue and expenditures current year going to relate to the budget that you're wanting to develop for next year? Right? You want, you want to know what the revenues are going to be, right? So for next year, FY twenty six, right? You want to know what the state revenues are going to be. So I think we're in the second year, right, of a two-year budget? So that should be easy to get that information for you.
I, I think, I think the, the point is like there's a sentence, however, please keep in mind the revenue projection is considered to be flat. Well, maybe it's just rewording that to be, we don't want to expect any
Right.
We, there's, we, we have no expectation that there's any increase in revenue.
It should be completely removed.
Exactly. I think that's a, a good way to say it. We, we don't have, we're not going to get any new money from the state. It's basically going to be the same.
And there is a shared development coming in where we're going to get, you know, it's not big business coming in.
Right? Nothing on the planning and zoning. Nothing that I've heard of.
We have a restaurant, some EV chargers.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, you, you can tweak it that way. That's good.
Yeah, I think that's just the point is that there's no ma- magic thing happening. So don't go thinking that.
No large distribution center.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
All right, so we'll table this for now. Pick it back up next month with a new letter and vote on it.
Oh, we have, I mean, the salary has to blow, because they have, everybody that's going to get this letter has to know when they're going to. Right, and maybe you have any thoughts on, on combining a couple of like?
What try to do more in the course of an evening?
I mean.
You're suggesting more of the quote unquote.
I don't know. Now there's first now I'm looking, I'm second guessing. Animal control, that's nothing. Parks and Rec, that's, that's pretty, that's going to go quick. Family Service, that's great. Library, that's, I guess, a discussion. Department, that's got to be a song, right? Probate, we just respectful that that's the way it is. Us, nothing, pressure, nothing.
Asian commissions easy, plans.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out a way to get a second.
What about doing the revenue presentation same items? C I P.
Mine's you.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing we have to think about is, you know, some of these are yeah, that would be. You know, every third Thursday is a regular meeting, so you have regular crap to do, but so.
Oh, right. Yeah.
So it very quickly happened, but that would be, yeah, so we keep the same. Let's see.
Twenty second, is it four to that? No, fifteenth, fifteenth. Is the elected officials.
I mean, that's last year's. You got to push it up a little bit. It's, it's the same, yeah. So that's their meeting in February would be that regular meeting, so.
All right, let's try to.
I am, and it's not a labor.
Feel like that first Thursday, we can put more into it.
Yeah, we can have a discussion on kind of where we.
Would that be a good time to do revenue, Donna, or is that too early for you?
I think the first.
The first, the first Thursday is a little too early to get all of the information.
Yeah, okay.
That's good to set the scene.
I'd throw a couple of the lesser ones on first if you wanted to, like for the finance budget if you wanted to put more into that.
If I remember right, all of the elected officials down here, the Board of Finance, Rich Shaw, that, they went relatively smoothly. Right. Like we could put them all on the first night and have, it might be a longer meeting. Nobody really wants to do that. But then if that opens up another day to have.
That's kind of what else.
Yeah, I, I think we could move all of those third ones or most of them to that first Thursday with the special revenue funds. And then we can still have time to do a regular meeting and whatever's left that we can't move on.
Yeah, I agree.
The special revenue funds and elected officials, these commissions will be done on February first.
Or whatever the, it would be on this year's calendar, but yeah. I mean, it, it will end up being a longer meeting, but if it saves us an entire day.
Yeah, we, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you take it with a grain of, you're not going to go through all of it. The library, you're going to have.
The library takes, takes longer.
Uh, planning, planning should be okay.
A couple of years ago, I remember. That got a lot of scrutiny a couple of years ago.
You never know.
Anyway, so that's those, that's kind of what I had. But like really, we don't even, like, we could do the library board and what is the which other one were you just saying? Yeah, kind of. Planning and zoning, those could be. The only time planning zoning was ever an issue was when we were arguing over having a Yeah. You know, arguing over, or Mike himself, I can't even say that, but Yeah, I mean, a second, um, position. Yeah, I mean, I got on the committee after this had started last year, so I don't know, but is there anything saying we have to do all the special revenue funds on the same night? Is it, or is it just easier to keep them together? Kind of always did it that way. Because we could break out the ones that Yeah. are historically more time-consuming, you could leave those ones for that third Thursday. And then you can put all of the easy ones in one meeting. If there's nothing saying you have to do all of it, like Yeah, I can remember the accounts at the same time.
Well, you're, you're on the right track, yeah. They present, speak, public participation is very encouraged, speakers will be willing to time and approach, and there's comments and making progress, stay on topic, and maintain decorum. Do we have anybody present for speaking? Ralph. Ralph, tell us.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me okay. Kudos to, uh, the Conservation Commission, uh, and how they put together their presentation tonight, I think, uh, I kind of glad to see this move forward. It's a certainly a sensible open space purchase for us. The other thing I'd like to comment on is Mr. T. Hand's presentation tonight. I have a couple of questions that I should have brought up when he was still in the room. Uh, he, he talks about his fourteen hundred dollar energy bill for a year, and that's wonderful, uh, and, and I know that the technology has gotten to the point where that's, that's very practical. But there's a debt service associated with this. If we were to do this in municipal buildings, which is where it makes the most sense, because I think the payback really comes over a long period of time. Uh, it's not something that goes away in the first five years. I would be concerned about chasing after grant money if it's reimbursement and the effect that it's going to have on our budget from a cash flow perspective. Obviously, some of this equipment's going to be more expensive than conventional fossil fuels. So, I, I think that's something that needs to be considered and actually worked out, work out the numbers over time. And secondly, we will never get rid of fossil fuels one hundred percent, because I don't know how you can power an emergency generator off electricity that doesn't exist, uh, because the grid's down. And which brings up another question, do these systems function if the grid goes down? I know with, uh, a lot of residential, uh, PV, solar, uh, you don't get electricity when the grid goes down because it's coordinated with the grid. And if if it goes down, your equipment goes down, unless you want to install batteries, and that adds a whole nother layer of cost. Anyway, but those are my thoughts on what transpired tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Alright, anybody else for present to speak? No? So, do we have a motion to end the meeting?
Oh, I, I was just going to say, I, I am not the president of the speaker, that's just how, but, um, uh, CIP, the, the committee has, uh, sent out a survey to all of the budget funding requesters, we're, we're trying to figure out a good name for people who are asking for money for CIP things, or should be asking for money for CIP things. And it's really, um, not as detailed as what, as a request for funding, but it's just a very simple, what sort of thing are you looking at in the next ten years? And also, like, if you think you're going to need something, just let us know, because we're going to try to map out what some of these things are, because every year there's last-minute stuff that we didn't know about, um, on the plan, so, so that's one thing that's happening, and, um, and then the ARPA Commission is another thing, um, by December thirty-first, we need to have everything encumbered, which is a little bit different than what we originally thought, which was that it just needed to be allocated, um, and encumbered just means that there has to be an actual purchase order and a contractor determined or a sort of funding, wherever they're going to buy it from, figured out, um, so there's only a few projects that were not already at that state that need to be, and there's probably going to be about a hundred thousand dollars that needs to get, um, encumbered by someone, um. And we're going to have a meeting on November fourth to figure that out, so, um, and that's that's what's happening there, but we, we have a couple of projects that were already on deck to, to get funding, uh, we were just waiting for all the, the dust to settle on these things, and so most likely it's going to be the, um, the playground resurfacing project that's been on CIP and in the ARPA pipeline, all this time, and that one will be really simple to encumber, because they're just going to go off the state bid and get as much sort of resurfacing as they can, basically, and, um, and then there's one project that Pete has that is for facilities study that we're hoping to have recategorize as studies slash repairs, because he could use that money to do some repairs, and he would be able to do that very quickly, so that's what we're hoping.
But they pay for that set, they go over the old town hall, where?
Well, that is covered by Steve Grant, so that's already taken care of, but there is a problem with the Boy Scout Hall that they have to fix, the, the big problem with that is that a new was not on our radar, was, has never been a CIP request kind of thing. Uh, and there's plenty of other little things, so, um, so Pete's working on that. We'll hopefully have a plan as of November, on November fourth, November, June one, and and then ARPA won't need to meet much anymore. And she'll be good.
Couldn't even meet ever.
I know.
And I also had, uh, the union negotiations with the teachers' union are pretty much wrapped up, and they should be signing, we didn't have to go to mediation.
Oh, goodness. That's good.
Anything else this evening?
I am on the Wellington Three Hundredth Anniversary Committee, which will happen in a little over two very short years. I finally made it to my first meeting, and they, we, we are starting to fit, finagle, formulate ideas on what to do. Does anybody from the General Public want to get involved?
But, well, when are you meeting?
Uh, after the first year, we're going to start doing a month, we've been doing it, gosh. There are two months.
The twenty twenty-six.
So.
Oh.
Alright, so two and a half.
Yeah. Wait a second, I'm already
Hold on, we're almost in five.
Yeah, you're right. And, and what's, well, like, we don't know what it is.
So we're trying to, you know, actually, I mean, I was around for the two seventy-third, I just missed the two fifty, as I wasn't quite here yet. Let's see, you know, we had a really great, uh, big parade down thirty-two, we'd like to do something like that, or, um, little, um, either history tours of things, activities, you know, throughout the year, that people can kind of play the drill, yeah, yeah, and stuff like that, there's, uh, there's all, there's tons, I, I like history, some, some people think it's boring. We'll be, we'll be partying like it's seventeen twenty-seven. Well, we're also going to ask for some money, so.
I just want to add some good and welfare, um, I just want to give goodness to all the wonderful fire people who recently exploded around Saturday. Yeah.
You know, one thing I could bring up too is what went down the hurricane down in North Carolina, the dean is down there, there are a lot of area churches that are collecting money to send down there to help churches down there and people out, so if anybody wants to get involved, contact your local church. Contact me, because our church is sending money down there for a church to be rebuilt.
Excellent, also, um, Channel Eight did an expose tonight, um, a friend of mine, Kate, who has been doing a lot of, um, helping on some of those farmers in Bakersfield, North Carolina, um, and there's been a lot of stuff, there's too much to explain, but, um, if you go on Channel Eight's, um, website, there was a story about Scotland donating hay on there, um, and it's kind of trying to send awareness that a lot of these farmers are really struggling, um, just one, one quick story, um, one of our people that donated a lot of money to get some generators for these people, a man was so grateful for getting a shower after nineteen days, so that was a great part, and, you know, thanks to Starlink, um, we've been able to connect to, be able to get a lot of these local churches, um, their first fall was brought down, um, they had a police escort, um, from eastern Tennessee all the way to Bakersfield, North Carolina, so, um, yeah, so if you get a chance and want to look at that on Channel Eight News, there is a link for hooking up with different organizations, including church.
Anybody else tonight? End of meeting, so moved.
This guy again.
On paper?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.